I do.
Okay, folks, I would like to welcome you to the Monday, September 30th, regular meeting in the St. Charles County Council. We will begin our meeting with an invocation by the Associate Pastor Brad Harris of St. Charles Bible Baptist, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. Please stand.
Let's pray together, maybe. Lord, again, we thank you for your goodness and your faithfulness. And we pray that as we conduct business for the greater good of our county, our cities, and the areas that are represented here, I pray that we do so in proper conduct, and that we honor you and glorify you in all things, in our hearts and our attitudes towards, again, our neighbors. And I pray, again, that you just bless this meeting, bless our city, our county, and our area with, again, all things being done well and for the greater good for each other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Swanson?
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Here.
Councilman Elam?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
Okay, first thing on our agenda tonight is the conditional use permits bills for perfection and final passage, beginning with Bill Number 5327.
Bill Number 5327, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-22A, for building structures or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Joseph A. Kester and Craig A. Daley property owners.
Okay. Now, I believe since this is a conditional use permit, the final record has been closed. So really, it basically gets down to calling a vote for the thing. Okay?
My comments, right?
Huh?
No.
I don't believe so.
Record's closed.
I mean, Roy, we've been through this a couple of different times, but refresh me on the--
You can comment if you'd like, but the record is officially--
Okay, so go ahead. Comment, it's just not going to be on the record.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say for the final vote, I gave this a lot of thought. And, you know, there's people behind it who, there's some opposition, but there are some people who live there in the subdivision that are in favor too, because I got those letters of support. They were afraid to come out because they didn't want the neighbors upset with them. There's people with the DMA, Defiance Murders Association, that they're in favor of this wedding venue. Let's keep in mind that this area is a hatched area. If you look at the master plan, it's got a hatch on it, which means that it's a historic wine district. And in my view, this property and this use is the perfect use for a wedding venue. Now, Mr. Kester went and talked to every property owner in that subdivision. He was very good about what he talked about. He said, "We're about to burn, put the trees up, have the lights pointed down where they don't cross the property line, no music outside, closing at 10." He agreed to everything. The wineries across the street and all around the area don't have rules like that, don't have stipulations like that. We passed the, right there, catty corner to him at F and 94, the meat shop. Well, I met with Larry and Tiffany Winkler when that was going down, and that bicycle shop came up for sale, and I talked to them about that and thought it'd be a better location to move it there. And that's what they did. But we gave them that zoning, and that was commercial zoning. This is a CUP, which is not transferable. Once, if they're done with it, it's gonna, it is what it is. They live on the property. They've been a part of this community for a long time. They live on the property, like the bed and breakfasts, like the different shops that we have in this wine district. And this is the perfect use for what we do in the wine district. And I know folks are behind there, some folks are concerned. But I will tell you, I've been living in the wine district for 30 years. I hear the music on the weekends. I see the fireworks. I live right behind Defiance Church. I hear their bands every weekend. And guess what? It's the wine district, and I think it's great. And that's just the way it is. And so for folks who get upset about that, you knew that it was a wine district. And you knew, when you live across, moved across the street from McCorr, you know there's going to be dump trucks. That's just the way it is. And so for that reason, I'm 100% in favor of this. Joe spent a lot of time in Germany. He speaks fluent German. He has ideas to do-- the whole club thing that was brought up, he was, he's only doing a club is because the county planning committee told him he had to do it that way. So it just means that he's going to have different groups, German groups and things like that. So it's going to be good for the community. There was some mention about the traffic or that corner. Like I said, I led that a long time. The reason there's accidents here is because it's a blind corner. You can't see because of the tree line and the weeds and all that stuff, which is MODOT. Mr. Kester called MODOT and asked them if they would remove those trees. He said, "No, that's not our problem." So what they're going to do as part of the conditions is they're going to clear that whole corner. It's going to be completely clear where there's a full line of sight when you're coming around that 90-degree turn, which is why there's accidents there. So you'll be able to see it. So it's making it safer. We could not make him do that if there wasn't this condition. We could not make him clear that corner, which is a big safety issue. So now it will be clear. And the thing with the traffic, MODOT is the one who approves the traffic in and out. They're the ones that approve where the entrances are. And they said it's safe. They said it's fine. It's not up to us. We're not road engineers. And when you talk about traffic, the traffic, we, they got the boat down there, the Hoffman boat, which is great. We never had to prove that. He has 50, 60, 100 people a week in there, some through a third a night. It doesn't cause any problems. It's more traffic than this thing's going to have. And all the wineries have thousands of people a day going out there. This venue's going to have, what, 50, 100 people? I mean, it's not going to even be noticeable. And so I think it's a really good thing for our county. I think it's a good fit, and it's what we do in this county in the wine district. If it was a gas station or something like that, it's totally different. But this is a fit. They're going to live on the property. They're going to be good neighbors. They're going to take care of the property. They wouldn't be bad neighbors. They've been good neighbors ever since they lived there. I've known them a while. So I'm 100% in favor of this.
Okay, I believe we're ready to vote, so please call the roll.
Bill Number 5327, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-22A, for building structures or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Joseph A. Kester and Craig A. Daley property owners. Councilman Swanson?
No.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
No.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Okay. The CUP has passed with a four-to-three vote. Next up is Bill Number 5328, which is actually the second part of this CUP concerning the same property.
Bill Number 5328, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-22B, for a private club to Joseph A. Kester and Craig A. Daley property owners.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Bill Number 5328, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 23-22B, for a private club to Joseph A. Kester and Craig A. Daley property owners. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
No.
Okay. That particular CUP passes. We now move to public hearing. We have a public hearing on setting the 2024 tax rates. It is my, to my knowledge, I don't believe there's any administration presentation, so we'll open it up for public comments. Are there anyone signed up?
Arnie Deanoff.
Mr. Deanoff?
Good evening, members of the county council. First of all, I just wanted to bring something to your attention. It's kind of hard and difficult to hear in the back. There's some type of humming in the audio system. If somebody in the back can try to fix or make that humming go away, would make the smoothest of the meeting, and people could understand a lot better the communication going on. But I'm here to testify on the public hearing for the tax levy hearing, the tax levy rates for three of the tax funds, the general fund, the road and bridge fund, and the dispatch and alarm fund. Our real estate, the property values for the county in 2024 year, the real estate has been deemed by the county assessor and some after appeals to the Board of Equalization, in the amount of, for real estate, $10,861,380,752. For personal property tax, the assessed valuation from the assessor for 2024 is in the amount of $2,567,377. For rail and utility, the county assessor assesses that at $319,659,28. Agricultural, for some reason, was left off. But in the worksheet to the state auditor, in the pro-rata worksheet, which is about nine to 12 pages long, there should be also agricultural that should have been disclosed and provided in the notice of the public hearing to the county, and it was published in the newspaper. New construction to the county for this year for residential and commercial is in the amount of new taxes, and that's occupied after 30 days, and it's prorated for the remainder of the year. So let's say they occupy a house or commercial dwelling in July, they'll pay that prorated amount between July, or I'm sorry, between August and December for this fiscal year. For residential and commercial combined, countywide, our new assessed value for new construction is $177,557,681. Rail and utility is $5,715,298. For a total of new construction and rail and utility improvements of $183,272,979. Now, as you all know, this is a non-assessment year. Vehicle values are starting to come back to reality and dropping. That's why you see the drop in personal property for trucks, motorcycles, some type of all-terrain vehicles, and regular driving vehicles. I'd like to bring to the attention of county residents that the senior citizen property tax freeze application, which we went through back in May, and I think it's been opened again. I'm not sure if residents are still allowed to file an application, but I would encourage people to file it this year or next year. There's going to be little to no impact this year because we're at the height of the real estate market right now. And I want to bring to the attention of citizens also under Chapter 137, in particular, state statute that was passed into law in this last General Assembly, which was signed by the governor and went into law on August 28th of this year. Chapter 137.1050 is a homestead tax credit for senior citizens and people with disabilities that are 100% disabled. And that would be $750 applied by the Department of Revenue for renters, and $1,100 for any homeowner that's considered a senior citizen. Now, as you all know, our sales taxes have gone up dramatically every year since COVID. As a matter of fact, for the previous 10 years from COVID, each and every year, we have seen a minimum of 2.5% to 7% of sales tax go up each and every year. This year, I predict our sales tax to be up in the amount of 4.5%. And so the recommendation from staff, and I guess your highly-paid consultant, Mr. Bob Schnar, who is a retired Assistant Director of Administration, collecting a pension from the county, he recommends the county council approve the general fund in the amount of zero, and I agree with that assessment. The road and bridge amount, he is recommending .1743, a 100 assessed valuation. And as you all know how your taxes go for residential, it's 18%. For commercial, it's 32%. And agricultural is 11%. And you divide that, and then you divide that by 100, and you times and times the tax rate to get with your actual tax bill will be in December from the county collector. The recommendation for Mr. Schnar for the dispatch and alarm is in the amount of .0335 cents per 100 assessed valuation, for combined total of .2078 per 100 assessed valuation. My recommendation, because of our dramatic increase in sales taxes, and every year, we hit, we hit a benchmark in historic new sales tax that come into our county with the increase in citizens and the increase of commerce in our county, I recommend that the general fund be set at zero, at .000. The road and bridge fund be set at .000, because we all pay a half a cent sales tax every time we go to make any type of purchase, and that goes to the road board, and that is taking in dramatically historic values each and every year. There are over $42 million in that half-cent sales tax this year, which goes against everybody else, all the estimated estimates. And so there's no need to charge residents on top of the half-cent sales tax. In my opinion, it's double taxation. The dispatch and alarm fund, which should be a number-one priority of public safety of our county, that should be a freebie. And so I'm asking if this county council set the tax rate at .000 in the dispatch and alarm fund. Doesn't even pay for the cost of administrative costs, paying the county collector the 1%. There's very little to no funds coming into that because people are getting near their landlines. And of course, we all know that cell phones are not taxed for this taxation that the county has in place. And I ask that you put all those three funds at .0000 for this fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Schnar.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schnar?
I'll be very brief, but to give you some perspective, we are recommending that our tax rates remain the same as they were last year. We're voluntarily keeping our rates that way, which does forgo some revenue. So I just wanted to share those numbers with you, that out of road and bridge, by not being able, or not assessing the full tax rate that we could, we are decreasing revenues to the, or not recognizing revenues in the road and bridge fund that we could of $745,000. And in the dispatch and alarm fund, that voluntary rollback cost that fund about $147,000. So assessed valuation will increase in January 25, as you're aware. That'll be a new set of challenges next year. But basically, we're leaving things as they have been, and it's a good place to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from any of the council? All right, moving on, we will move to the oral report. First of all, no, sorry.
Public comment.
Huh?
Public comment.
We will move to public comment. Just a reminder that if you would like to speak in public comment, to fill out, please fill out a speaker card. You will be limited to three minutes. And Lori?
Regarding Bill Number 5329, Robert Guinness.
Good evening. My name is Robert Guinness. I represent the Agape Church of Wentzville. I'm here to support the ordinance. Pastor Bond and some of the constituents of the church are here. And last month, you heard some comments from the neighbors. One was about the wet ground. That was due to a pump that had to be replaced. It was replaced, and that problem has not reoccurred. The facility has a sewage treatment plant that was sized for 1,000 people. So there's appropriate infrastructure on the property as it is. Concerns about the development, ignore the fact that right across from the road, there was commercial development that is already existing. And here, there's a picture today looking across the parking lot to what's happening across the road, a large commercial development. And really, this property has 119 paved parking spots, has a 12,000-square-foot building on it, and a very tall cell tower. This is not an agricultural property. I'm sure the neighbors would not be appreciative of some of the agricultural uses that the property could have on it with permissive uses. The property right now could have a 1,000 hen facility to produce eggs as a permissive use. I'm not saying that's what they would do, but that's what the zoning code allows. And that's not suitable for this property. What is this property, really? It's a commercial property. That's what the 2030 master plan says it is, is commercial property. When the professional planning and zoning staff looked at this property, they said, "Yes, C2 is appropriate." When planning and zoning looked at all the evidence, they said, "Yes, C2 is appropriate." And so I urge you to approve the ordinance and confirm what the Planning and Zoning Commission did, support what your professional staff evaluated, and more importantly, implement what your 2030 master plan says, because the property owners should have a reasonable right to rely on that master plan. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. We'll call you back up if we have questions when we get to the bill. Lori?
Matthew Floki.
Thank you, council members. The vast majority of residents residing within the and beyond the 1,000-foot radius of Agape Church have been contacted and all have voiced their strong opposition to a blanket C2 rezoning without any specific development or developer in mind. Concerns have been raised regarding the possibility of a development similar to an unsightly structure currently being constructed across the street. While the presence of a basketball court may not be the primary concern, there is a prevailing sense of uncertainty regarding, what may potentially replace it in the future. While the addition of a volleyball court may be appealing, the implementation of C2 rezoning would permit external usage. With C2 zoning in place, the potential outcomes are limitless and could result in unforeseen repercussions. While the addition of another church would certainly be beneficial, a more favorable option would be to consider a C0 commercial office or R1 rezoning for the property. Ideally, a business operating within standard nine-to-five business hours would be the preferred in order to minimize any potential disruptions to the surrounding neighborhood. Our concerns lie in the potential increase in noise, light pollution, and traffic that could negatively impact the neighborhood's quality of life. The west side of the neighborhood has been rezoned for commercial use via Wentzville, while the east side remains zoned in residential purposes and is bordered by beautiful three-to-10-acre home lots. Residents were drawn to this neighborhood for its spacious lots, peaceful surroundings, and proximity to upscale subdivisions. It is worth noting that even Wentzville's long-term plan designates these sites for residential development. It is important for everyone to understand that the church's presence in our neighborhood was always temporary. Much like any future businesses that may come and go, the decision of the church to relocate underscores very reason why we are hesitant to support a rezoning to C2. We cannot predict what types of businesses may occupy the space in the future, and we must consider the potential impact on our community. As Agape considers relocating, we harbor no ill will towards them and hope that their departure does not leave us with any undesirable consequences.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mac Parson?
Good evening. I heard him mention something about the 2030 master plan. Is that able to be changed? Is that something that can change? It's zoned agricultural. Now, how is, if it is zoned agricultural, how would the church get there in the first place? The core of Wentzville is all businesses. This is beyond the main center of Wentzville. The picture that he had showed up there shows the parking lot facing across the road, which is all commercial area, plenty of commercial area over there. The area around this church has houses around it on three sides and North Point Prairie Road. North Point Prairie Road is not in the best of condition, does not support a high-traffic, high-volume type of business right there. Some of the concerns that I have are, you know, if there's something new goes in there, we're going to have dumpsters, you know, possibly early in the morning, depends on the business, obviously, noise, construction, the lights. The cell phone tower is darn near in the middle of the property, and I'm wondering how close we can build stuff to that as well. The church currently has traffic on Sundays, and I'm assuming whatever business goes there is going to be ongoing traffic all day long. Wentzville is already, you know, growing extremely fast, and I don't feel like this particular location with having residential houses on three different sides of it is a good spot to have a big business. Some of the smaller businesses, dentist office, something like that, might be acceptable in that general area. Currently, there is no other businesses on North Point Prairie Road. In my opinion, a few homes in this area would be better suited than any type of big business. In my opinion, a few homes in this area would be better suited than any type of big business. I believe we're trying to change the zoning of this so the property's worth more, we can get top dollar for the property. And us as a community have to drive past whatever goes there at all times. We have to live next to it, and it's up to the council here to decide what is appropriate. I think we need to consider what's best for the community and adjacent homeowners.
Thank you, sir. Lori?
Steve Amerin.
It will. It'll pop.
Steve Amerin, do you need my address?
No, no.
I live on Greenway, so it goes right around there. Right where my finger is and is highlighted is where the Agape Church is going. The big brown excavation site is where that's commercial. Now, I can only zoom in or zoom out so far, but all of this, everything else is either residence or golf courses. I'm not sure what we are rushing to rezone. A lot of people would say derogatory comment would be spot zoning is to have this there. Yeah, okay, it's on the west side. There's, you know, highway traffic, outer road traffic, but now we're starting to come down North Point Prairie. Other than the school, which is not zoned commercial, is the only high-traffic thing all the way to Highway Forty or Sixty-one. So, my concern is, one, they're asking for just a blanket C-two. No developer, no development. It's just a zoning change. We don't know what's going to be there. It could be something nice. It could be something pleasant. It could also not. So, my hope would be, obviously, I don't believe there's any choice of this evening asking for another rezoning, so I'd ask for you guys to reject it in total and let them come back for something that's a little more appropriate for the area for rezoning, whether that's residential or CO, something that would tie in nicely with the neighborhood, going down the outer road next to all the subdivisions, or CO. So, this just doesn't make sense. You know, my concern is, you know, they were talking previously about volleyball, basketball, things like that, which seem nice and all wonderful, but when that fails and goes away to somewhere else, then what? And then, when that fails, then what? I've never seen anything go back from C-two to residential or all the way back to agriculture. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My family has lived on Dovetail Lane for thirty-five years, and I would like to talk about our neighborhood. At the last planning and zoning meeting and again tonight, you were shown a photo, which was a little misleading as to what our area looks like. The photo was looking west across North Point Prairie towards the Dave Hokel Parkway. It's an empty field with a behemoth of a building going up. That's the west side of North Point Prairie. I would like to show a few photos of our neighborhood on the east side of North Point This is our home of thirty-five years with six-point-five acres, and we directly border the church on the east side. There's another home next to us on the east. There's one on the north and one on the south. The top photo shows the house on the east side. The bottom photo is the house on the north. This is the house in their acreage on the south side. And these homes are on golf view. As you can see, these homes are all on three to seven acres, and they are lovingly maintained. These photos represent homes in the area and do not include the Bear Creek Golf Club and the Huntsdale Subdivisions that are all within a thousand feet of the Agape Word Church. People moved to this neighborhood to have a country setting close to Wentzville and all its amenities, and we do not want C-two zoning in our front yards. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gerald Carter.
Denise is my wife. I live right next to the Agape Church. And one thing I would like to do is thank the Agape Church Pastor Bond for being such good neighbors for the past thirty-five years. I'm going to miss them and hate to see them go. And I hate talking against what they want because of that, but I feel like I have to. I did back in the nineteen-eighties when this exact same question came up and was rejected. And I'm asking you to reject it again thirty-some years later. The C-two designation would allow any kind of a business to go in there. We don't know what it would be. And even if they have something like a gym or recreation area to go in now, it's not going to last forever. Nothing does. We don't know what would come after that when they need to sell their property. And I'd like to show you some of what I think. Let's see. Well, let me get this here. Will that show up?
In a second.
Not very well. Okay. You can see that, oh, this is the church. This is their parking lot that fronts onto, fronts onto North Point Prairie. Mike Easement comes down here to my house. There's another house here. There's another house here. The church is in kind of a horseshoe-shaped piece of land there. And he's right. If you look to the west, you can see this area here, which is where those big concrete boxes are. I think it's going to be a storage area. I'm not sure. But that piece of ground and where they're building that commercial business, this line coming right across here is the service road. The commercial part of this land that they're developing is more, will be more accessed and more accessible from the service road than it will be from North Point Prairie. This church is not part of that, of that development. And I would just like you to perhaps go to a commercial O so that that's what they recommend to be as a transitional area between higher commercial uses and residential areas. And that would fit right there as part of the commercial transition area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Cheryl Jones.
I am a resident down from the church, and I'm against something going commercial because I moved to this area with the beautiful wildlife and the seclusion and privacy, a country setting near conveniences. And when they built that storage across the street, it's not done yet, but it's awful. I mean, we miss the turkeys, the turtles, the owls. We want peacefulness and seclusion, you know? We don't want commercial. That's why we bought in this area. And as far as I know, commercial never helps your property value. I don't know of anybody that says, hey, I want to live in a neighborhood with a commercial front. Nobody says that because they don't. I am concerned because the church had low activity. They had a church service once a week, and once a month, they had a Saturday night healing service. Very low, you know, motion activity going on. We have no control of what may go in. It will add to getting in and out on this narrow little road with no shoulders that's already falling apart. I noticed they let the storage area actually connect to it, which will allow more destruction to the road. You can't even get out on the corners without them falling off. And besides that, it's residential. It's people's homes. We don't want to live near a business district. That's why we moved where we do, and we pay all these taxes to live where we are and support that. And we care about nature and our families and everything. It really does connect and affect a lot of parts of this, you know, trying to be disrupted because someone wants to move with no consequences, no accountability to what comes in there. They'll be gone. But we live there, and it does affect the quality of life, the pollution, the noise, the people coming in that we have no familiarity with, you know? It's a risk, in my opinion. So, that is my point about it because it would change the dynamics of our neighborhood. And you as citizens, would you want it in front of your neighborhood? You know you wouldn't. You have to represent citizens that want to keep nature and peacefulness and quietness, you know? So, you have a place to go and get away from all that. That's what homes are about. So, that's my say about it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ed Jones.
Apologies for my voice. It's all, yeah, cold. So, anyway, I could put up maps like everybody else is doing and say the same thing and just keep repeating it because it's really, it really is what it is. We don't, we don't want a commercial building right on, you know, on our property. We paid a premium to live where we do. It's a nice, quiet piece of ground. We call it a little piece of heaven in a chaotic world. I'm not sure why a new church being there is not even being considered. I mean, I'm sure there are many church plants that could use a new home. You know, I'm sure there was a time in Agape's history where they were looking for the same kind of thing when they built this place, you know? And I don't know. I could continue to go on and on and on, but you know, I don't want to be disparaging, but it feels like, you know, they put up a cell tower, you know? I don't feel like that's very neighborly. And now, they're going to ask for C-two zoning on the way out the door. I don't feel like that's very neighborly. And I'm not trying to be disparaging. Like I said, it's just, I feel like if anything, you know, if we have to have something, make it C-zero at least so there's something that's, you know, can be decent there. If you get a bar or something in there, you know, this isn't, as you mentioned before, the wine district. This is a very calm and quiet neighborhood. I mean, we live on almost six acres of ground. We get to watch the deer, you know, that wasn't my idea I was talking about. We like to watch the wildlife, you know, and we pay a premium for that. We certainly didn't expect a church to up and leave and then on the way out the door say, hey, here you go, have a nice bar or a winery or some twenty-four-hour business that, as everybody has said, it's going to be light pollution, it's going to be noise pollution. The roads certainly can't handle it. I don't want to pick on the roads, you know? It was only designed really for just, you know, residential subdivision, you know, people that come in and out of their homes. It's not meant for truck traffic for twenty-four-hour business. It's just not going to support it. And you've heard many of us come up here and say the same thing over and over again. We just don't want it, you know? I mean, nothing against the church, but I feel like, you know, at best, C-zero would be good. I think really, they should search for another church plant that could use a home. I guarantee there's some out there like that, and I'm sure they face that in some other time. And none of this is my business, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. I couldn't find any place where there's a sale price. Maybe that land was donated to them. Maybe they should do the same thing. Just a thought. Thanks.
Okay.
Regarding agenda items, Arne C. Ac-Dinov, county public advocate.
First thing I'd like to talk about is the amended agenda and a request to the chair to explain to the citizens what the meaning of the amended agenda is and an explanation of exactly what was changed from posting the agenda this past Friday. Last meeting, I sent you all a memo about the meeting and my proposed votes, and I got no response from any council members. You're all paid twenty-thousand-dollar annual salary, free medical benefits, lifetime pension, cellphone payment, office staff, and you can't even return an email for two small meetings a month that last less than an hour and a half. So, the sheriff's security checkpoint here today, it should be for all or none. You've heard me talk about it over and over again. Everybody should go through the checkpoint, whether you're an employee, an elected official or not. Mr. Hollander went through the checkpoint and did everything that was appropriate. Mr. Ryan Graham, the Parks Director, got a free pass without scrutiny and being checked by the security sheriff's female deputy. So, let's not pick and choose winners and losers. Let's treat everybody on the same playing field. To the county registrar and to Roy O'Sullivan, the resident of South St. Louis to my right, not a registered voter of St. Charles County, is mandated by our county Home Rule Charter and does not qualify as our county counselor, still lives in an office unruly, makes a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars and supports the economy of the city of St. Louis. When I ask you about a meeting in time, which I asked Joanne Lycom, and she couldn't answer the emails, so she gave it to Mr. O'Sullivan, and Ms. Lycom makes two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar salary. I asked John Greishew for about the meeting, a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar salary. Brian Ludwig, a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar salary, and never got a response until after the meeting, so I couldn't attend the public meeting. Answer me and do not play games and pass it on to Mr. O'Sullivan, who's not even a qualified county counselor. Under Chapter six, seven point zero-two-three, what committees and boards are you, Joanne Lycom, on and appointed to with terms and expiration dates? Chapter six, seven point zero-two-three, the contract payment plus full pension paid to Bob Schnarr, your former Assistant Director of Administration, and Tracy Bain, the Acting Director of County Finance, who qualifies under our county charter and is a resident of St. Peter's, appoint her permanently, Mr. Alman. Don't play political games. The stair replacement at fifty-eight-thousand dollars in animal control centers, is that really necessary of taxpayer money? Law enforcement centers, how many training centers do we need in our county? The county's spending three million dollars. Chesterfield Valley is gaining a fifty-five-million-dollar state appropriations that was signed in by the governor. O'Fallon is going to spend thirty-eight to fifty million dollars with a contract with the city of O'Fallon and the city of St. Charles. How many law enforcement centers do we need?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Regarding tax foreclosure surplus, Tamara Rucker.
Hello. Forgive me, I'm not good at public speaking, so. Good evening, members of the St. Charles County Council. My name is Tamara Rucker, and I am the owner of Rockwood Recovery LLC, a legitimate airfinder business registered through the Missouri Treasury to operate in Missouri, dedicated to helping individuals and families recover surplus funds from tax foreclosure sales and unclaimed property from MUPD. It is important to note that a registered airfinder does not operate as an agent of the Missouri Treasury regarding tax foreclosure surplus claims, when it comes to tax foreclosure surplus claims, and we also only work on a contingent basis. Over the past several months, I have encountered significant difficulties working with the County Collections Office. These challenges are not only affecting my clients, many of whom are grieving families entitled to these funds, but it's also impacting my ability to run my business effectively and provide the services my clients depend on. And as you know, when a property is sold at a tax foreclosure auction for more than the tax is owed, the homeowner or the heirs are entitled to the surplus funds. My job is to identify who these people are, assist them with filing the necessary paperwork, and provide them with separate legal representation, which I cover at no cost to them. However, in recent months, the Collections Office has been unresponsive to a particular claim that I've submitted on behalf of my clients. For example, the Gaddy family, who is entitled to the surplus proceeds from the 2022 tax sale, yet the claim has been stalled without explanation despite repeated attempts to contact the collector in her office. This is not an isolated case, but part of a larger trend of delays, unresponsiveness, which my legal representatives and myself have discovered during our investigation. This lack of cooperation is deeply concerning, not only for my clients, but often, uh, sorry, who are often facing difficult situations, but also for my business that depends on open communication. The delays and lack of transparency from the collector's office are preventing my clients from receiving what they are legally entitled to as ruled by the St. Charles County probate judge on August sixteenth, and it's created distrust. Beyond the immediate financial impact to my client, and due to me incurring over ten thousand dollars in costs, in costs to pursue this claim alone, the lack of communication has broader implications. And as you know, under the revised statute one forty-two thirty, surplus funds is due to the county after three years if unclaimed. However, the recent, and the recent Tyler v. Hennepin County ruling of the US Supreme Court determined, determined that such a sheetment is an unconstitutional taking of property. So not only are my clients being deprived of their legal right to these funds by the delays.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Clayton, regarding flooding in Cinnamon Hills and Cox Hill areas.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I first want to start off by saying thank you. We do have a lot of work going on in front of my house right now, um, which I'm really happy to see. And I was told quarter of a month by Mr. Owens here that there's more to come, which I'm going to address today anyways. Um, until it's done, I can't say anything about it. No, keep talking. Um, so thank you guys for putting the work, uh, forward on our street, helping make that, our street safer and working, uh, throughout the, the area to get more inlets for the water. Like I said, I don't have it happening right now. On the side of my house is a, um, a hill that was, um, basically placed there whenever the new inlet or the new, um, waterway was put from the storm drain system. Um, all this, um, dirt was moved and then replaced. And it was replaced into a hill rather than a swale. And when the county's, um, storm drain system fails, it of course goes up and up in the hill in between our homes. That was placed there by the county or the county's contractor, caused that water to flood into my home. Um, if that swale is placed back in from our conversation, this does help and most likely will answer, um, in addition to the work that's being done in front of my home. Um, so this would be a great win for us, uh, personally and for the local street and create a through pass through high waterways, uh, or high water downpours. So if that is the case, I'm extremely happy, but until I see it, you know, or at least it starts, I'm gonna make sure I keep bringing it up. Um, some other things that were done is that, um, I was told there would be a water study given out or presented by the first of September. Um, it is the last day of September. Um, I haven't seen that water study yet. Um, even though these actions are being taken to, um, secure our streets, secure our homes on Cinnamon Hills, um, I still want to understand the methodology behind it and understand what areas aren't safe. Um, so maybe we can let other homeowners know what's going to be done in their area or what they should have requested in their area for their safety. If anything can be done to show me that or work with that, um, within our community, I'd love to get that, um, discussed and brought among the different members that have, uh, come to me with, um, their flooding issues. And I do have a list of about eighteen homes that could attend our first meeting. And I'm sure there's more out there that would love this information. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That was the final speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, do we have an oral report? What's that?
Was there someone else to speak on the cookies?
No, don't think so. I didn't see him. All right. Uh, oral report, county executive?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, okay, we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. We now move on to bills for final passage, uh, beginning with bill number fifty-three twenty-nine.
Bill number five-three-two-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C two general commercial district per application R Z twenty-four dash zero six.
Questions or comments on fifty-three twenty-nine? Mr. Hammond.
I think a C two zoning for, for this particular area is too high, considering being surrounded by three sides, by homes. So I would like to offer a compromise and go to a C one. And I would be glad to put that in motion after the discussion.
Can you do that without asking a petition?
Abs- absolutely.
Rory, can, can, can the council do that? If they want a C two, can we make it a C one? Say, someone said C zero. Is there such a thing?
Yeah, that's office.
In office.
Okay.
Could, could.
Absolutely. Rory, can, can, can the council do that? If they want a C two, can we make it a C one? Say, someone said C zero. Is there such a thing?
Yeah, that's office.
In office.
Okay.
For the council, for a council member to make a motion to.
Yes.
A bill that's before you, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think that before we would, you know, go further though, I think we would need to talk with the applicant to see if that's, uh, along the lines of something they, they want, um, or would consider.
Well, it's either, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote for a C two. And I, I know why they want a C two, cause they can market the property and get more money out of it. So I'm, I'm, I would support a C one or a C zero, but I won't support a C two.
So I guess you could make a motion to table, couldn't you?
Why, why can't we just go ahead and do it? Then they can move ahead, trying to find higher for.
You can make whatever motion you want, but I meant you could also do that, so, because I don't know if we could.
Yes, Mr. Swanson.
We've had the residents come out here in two separate meetings and speak. We've heard their complaints. We understand. Dave, I completely respect what you're saying. I'd rather just vote this. And if they want to come back and bring it in as a C one, let them bring it back as a C one instead of us mandating it.
Anyone else quit?
Is that, Rory, if, if we vote it down, are they, is it, is there a rule that they can't come back for a period of time, like a year or something?
I don't believe so, not on a rezoning. If this was a C U P, then there's a requirement. But I don't believe that there is on, on our.
If they change the zoning.
Yeah.
Change the zoning, they could come back?
Can't back, can't come back with the exact same thing.
They would have, yeah, they'd have to go through the planning and zoning and the, the same process.
I would, I would, I would, I mean, in fairness to the, to them, I would say that I would prefer, it's Matt's district, but I prefer tabling it and seeing if they come back with a better solution. I won't support C two either, cause they can put all kinds of stuff in there. But I think that it's only fair since they don't need to go through the planning and zoning process and waste all that time. It's only fair to say, see if they come back with a better solution. If they don't, then we go to town. That's my opinion.
Mr. E.
I, I do have a question about that. So if, if we did what they're talking about, would they bypass planning and zoning? Or wouldn't they have to go back if they decide they wanted to go? And I don't even know if you even want to entertain C one, for that matter. We're making decisions for you, which I'm uncomfortable with. I, I think it should be the applicant's decision as to what zoning they want to come and ask for. But if, if Dave's motion went through and we went to amend this from a C two to a C one, do they get to skip planning and zoning and just move to that?
Yeah.
Or don't they have to go back through planning and zoning again and redo that?
I think that because you'd be moving to a, a lesser version, as opposed to something that's higher than C two.
Yeah.
County executive.
I think when this has come up in the past, people wanted to go higher.
Right.
That, that couldn't be done because people didn't have a chance to comment at P and Z on the, on the higher.
And by higher, we mean that it's less restricted.
Higher density.
They, right, or they could be more expansive with development of the property than what they asked for. You couldn't go that way.
Well, I believe, I think, uh, the way that I see this, we have basically two choices. I mean, choice number one would be to table it. Choice number two would be go ahead and, uh, vote on it. And if it fails, then the applicant would have to then turn around and come back with, uh, with what they think would be a, a better solution.
It's not interactive.
But they would have to, but they would have to go back to planning and zoning then.
I'd make a motion that we table it. That's my motion.
Okay, we have, um, okay, let's, let's start over here. Did you, you make, you made a motion?
I didn't make a motion.
You didn't?
I was waiting.
Okay, so we do have a mo- a motion by Mr. Brazel to table it.
I second the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, there is. Okay, all those in favor of tabling it say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, I believe that, uh.
I said no.
There were four nos.
They were louder, right?
There were a lot of nos.
There were, there were four nos, which means that at this point, the, uh, tabling it has been defeated. So I believe it's, uh, that we will go ahead on and vote on the, uh, the bill as it is.
Well, now I'd like to make another motion. I make, I'd like to make a motion that we change the zoning proposed from C two to C one.
I need a second.
There's no public comment on C one.
Don't see a second, so, all right, which means at this point, again, we, uh, will move on to voting on the final, final passage of this particular bill.
Bill number five-three-two-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C two general commercial district per application R Z twenty-four dash zero six. Councilman Neelam?
No.
Councilman Hollander?
No.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilwoman Schneider?
No.
Councilman Baker?
No.
Councilman Swanson?
No.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Okay. Uh, bill number fifty-three twenty-nine has failed, and now we move on to bill number fifty-three thirty.
Bill number five-three-three-zero, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation to fund the Josephville Road Phase Three project, resurfacing and adding shoulders to county roads.
Questions or comments on fifty-three thirty? Seeing none, uh, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-zero, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation to fund the Josephville Road Phase Three project, resurfacing and adding shoulders to county roads. Councilman Hollander?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Okay, bill number fifty-three thirty has passed. Moving on, bill number fifty-three thirty-one.
Bill number five-three-three-one, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R O nine-two zero zero three with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Oberhelm Road over a tributary to the Darden Creek.
Questions or comments, fifty-three thirty-one? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-one, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero three with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Oberhelm Road over a tributary to the Darden Creek. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes. Okay. Bill number, uh, fifty-three thirty-one passes. Uh, next up, bill number fifty-three thirty-two.
Bill number five-three-three-two, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero four with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Schwadey Road over a tributary to the Darden Creek.
Okay. Questions or comments on, uh, bill number fifty-three thirty-two? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-two, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero four with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Schwadey Road over a tributary to the Darden Creek. Councilwoman Schneider?
I'm sorry? Your vote?
Yes.
Oh, did you say my name? Okay, I'm sorry. I see you here. Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Okay. Bill number fifty-three thirty-two has passed. Bill number fifty-three thirty-three.
Bill number five-three-three-three, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Sneak Road on Callaway Fork of Famo Sage Creek.
Questions or comments on fifty-three thirty-three? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-three, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Sneak Road on Callaway Fork of Famo Sage Creek.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-three, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project B R O dash R zero nine-two zero zero five with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds for a replacement of a steel girder bridge on Sneak Road on Callaway Fork of Famo Sage Creek. Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Okay, bill number fifty-three thirty-three has passed. Uh, next up, bill number fifty-three thirty-four.
Bill number five-three-three-four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute intergovernmental agreements with municipalities for road maintenance and repair.
Questions or comments, fifty-three thirty-four? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute intergovernmental agreements with municipalities for road maintenance and repair. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, bill fifty-three thirty-four passes. Next up, bill number fifty-three thirty-five.
Bill number five-three-three-five, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Program, section one-one-five-point-seven-one-zero, pay grade assignments to include a new position and budget change related to the Police Department's Bureau of Criminal Investigation and reclassifications and budget changes for positions related to the Department of Road and Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend bill number five-three-three-five and replace it with substitute bill five-three-three-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a proposal for a substitute bill and a second. Uh, next up would be discussion on the substitute bill. I see any discussion on the substitute bill. Seeing none, please call the roll.
We'll have all in favor of the substitute.
Oh, all in favor of the substitutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, now we'll vote on the substitute.
Substitute bill number five-three-three-five, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Program, section one-one-five-point-seven-one-zero, pay grade assignments to include a new position and related budget change within the Police Department's Bureau of Criminal Investigation, a new crisis intervention officer and related budget change within the Bureau of Administrative Services, and five new police officers and related budget change within the Bureau of Patrol, and reclassifications and related budget changes for positions within the Department of Road and Bridge.
Okay. Uh, questions or comments? Uh, please call the roll.
Substitute bill number five-three-three-five, an ordinance amending the Personnel Administration Program, section one-one-five-point-seven-ten, pay grade assignments to include a new position and related budget change within the Police Department's Bureau of Criminal Investigation, a new crisis interven- intervention officer and related budget change within, within the Bureau of Administrative Services, and five new police officers and related budget change within, within the Bureau of Patrol, and reclassifications and related budget changes for positions within the Department of Road and Bridge. Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill fifty-three thirty-five passes. The final bill for, uh, final passage is bill number fifty-three thirty-six.
Bill number five-three-three-six, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year twenty-twenty-four.
Questions or comments on the bill considering establishing tax rates? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-three-six, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the General Revenue Fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year twenty-twenty-four. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Okay, bill fifty-three thirty-six passes. Now we move on to bills. Okay. Bill fifty-three thirty-six passes. Now we move on to bills for introduction, starting with bill fifty-three thirty-seven.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Highway Department and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources to install a stream gauge on Meddy Road.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Swanson.
Staff, do we know which creek this is gonna be on? Is it gonna be on Big Creek? Do you know? Sorry, John. The DNR stream gauge, do we know which creek that's gonna be on? Is it Big Creek?
It says in the bill McCoy Creek.
Oh, it's on McCoy?
McCoy.
Okay.
All right. Next up is bill number fifty-three thirty-eight for introduction.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-eight, requested by Mary Case, medical director sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance accepting a grant for the Office of the Regional Medical Examiner.
Questions or comments on fifty-three thirty-eight? Seeing none, we move on to bill fifty-three thirty-nine.
Bill number fifty-three thirty-nine, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Dave Hammond, Terry Hollander, and Tim Baker, an ordinance authorizing execution of the intergovernmental agreement relating to the installation, maintenance, and operation of a license plate reader system between the St. Charles County and City of St. Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to bill fifty-three forty.
Bill number fifty-three forty, requested by Daniel Keen, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Department of Corrections, Vital Core Health Strategies, and the Community College of Jefferson County and its nursing students to establish a clinical and training experience for nursing students from the Community College of Jefferson County.
Questions or comments on fifty-three forty? Seeing none, the last bill for introduction, bill fifty-three forty-one.
Bill number fifty-three forty-one, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance setting the 2025 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Cigna Health Insurance Company, Davis Vision, and self-insured Delta Dental Insurance benefits for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Hammond.
What is the current maximum under this proposed bill for out-of-pocket expense to the employee?
Come on up.
Individual employee deductible each calendar year is $300. And then depending on the nature of the services they receive, it could be a copay of 25 to 45 bucks. If you go to the emergency room, there's a deductible of $250. Chiropractic is $25, and so on.
Now, what's the maximum amount of out-of-pocket for an employee?
Per individual, individual employees, it's $6,050, and family is nine.
You know, that seems awfully high to me. I wish we could reduce that number. You know, $6,000 is a lot of money for an employee you have to fork out, especially if they're on a small salary anyway. So I don't know if there's anything we could do to improve that.
Well, what's the average? Do you know? I don't know what the average is. What do most people pay?
Excuse me, we have never had, in my recollection, anybody that's hit that $6,000 mark, because we're talking about copays, not a bill.
I'm not concerned about the copay. It's just a total annual out-of-pocket rate seems very high. I know I've had some medical expenses, and I've never got to the $6,000, but it was still pretty painful.
If I'm understanding it correctly, that's what he's saying. We haven't had anybody get to that level. That would be the maximum of what you're asking, is what is the maximum? But from what I understand, he's saying we haven't had an employee ever get to that number. So, and Dave, I would tell you, I know a number of people who are buying their insurance out on the open market. They have deductibles of $10,000 a year. That's their deductible. So they pay up, they pay that first $10,000 before their insurance pays anything. So I would say in today's healthcare market, that's actually a really good deal for our employees when you consider what it could be. My sister just retired early, and she missed her Cobra window of, for her to be able to Cobra from her work to get her to 65. And her deductible on the market that she was gonna have to get was $7,500. So that's what she was gonna have to pay. Luckily, next month, she starts on Medicare, but, yeah, I mean, to Joe's point, how does it compare? I think it's actually not bad for what it is, and I've worked for some very large companies who had some rather high out-of-pocket deductibles. So overall, in comparison, I don't think that's bad at all.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Any other questions?
Do you have something you want to add?
I was just gonna say, when we studied this, what, three years ago, we were on the better side of average. We were better than most. And one of the things, though, that we looked at is, we saw plans where there were lifetime maximums, and to John's credit, he brought up, why are we doing that? Because we only have a very few employees who have ever had, you know, like a major issue, open-heart surgery, you know, a premature infant, and we got rid of the lifetime maximums. Because that, it's that accumulation of your copay, like Ed said, we don't have employees hit that, but we have had a few employees who've had horrific medical issues occur in their family, and so we got rid of the lifetime maximum.
Well, I would say, though, if you're ever airlifted...
Yeah.
You're talking $60,000, $80,000.
Right, but we have, our copay isn't anywhere near that. So I think, if I'm understanding what you're asking, what's the maximum out-of-pocket for an employee?
Per year.
Right. So, and it sounds like it's $6,000 is where we're at. So that's max.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on, I guess that is the last bill for introduction, fifty-three forty-one. Are there any tabled bills to be removed?
I'd like to make a motion to take bill fifty-three zero-two off the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye to take this bill off.
Aye.
Okay. Tabled, bill number fifty-three zero-two is now off the table and up for discussion.
I'll just try to explain this real quick. This bill was developed in 2002. It was trying to get a hold of septic tanks that were dumping into creeks and stuff like that. And in recent years, we've got, I've got complaints on it with real estate agents and stuff like that, and different, the way it was working. However, met with Mike and Rick, we spent a lot of time on this prior several months ago, and then we talked about it again last night, and Matt and Dave was in the meeting, and we feel comfortable with what they did. Actually, it's less restrictive and gives more movement between the buyer and the sellers, where the government's not as involved, and it allows people to have, what we were doing, if you bought a farm next to your farm, and there was a house on it, you were mandated to have the septic tank inspected in the well, and even if you weren't living on it, you had to fix it. So we're changing that category to declaring it as a vacant property, so they don't have to do anything with it, but just keep the outside decent. And so I think it's much less restrictive. It works for other family farms and stuff when they're buying other properties, and so this is a good thing, so, yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Please call the roll on bill number fifty-three oh-two. I guess you have to read the title.
Do we need to make a motion to amend this bill?
Was there any amendment?
We didn't amend it.
You guys stuck with what you had. That's what I guess.
Bill number five-three zero-two, an ordinance amending Chapter 500 and Chapter 505, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero-two, an ordinance amending Chapter 500 and Chapter 505, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Okay. Bill number fifty-three oh-two passes. Are there any announcements or miscellaneous?
I have an announcement.
I do, too.
I'd like to introduce Charles. I noticed him out there. Charles Grodek, he is the chairman of the Jefferson County County Council. Welcome aboard, buddy. Come on, thanks for coming by.
Always welcome. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I have two things, actually. One, I want to thank the highway department and community development for all these multitude of stormwater drainage issues that we've got, and they've jumped on it, Rich Neco and everybody in your department. I want to thank you. And along the line of what Clayton said, John, I would like to skip those studies that Rich had done, if I could. I know we had met, talked about this, and I'd just like to review it and just see what all the details in there, so that I know what's coming up or what's being done. But again, thank you, thank you both for your departments and the work that they've done. Secondly, we've got budget talks coming up, and, you know, we've got a serious problem with our corrections department that we need to look at. We've got employee, I think we're down 30 employees, and they're working overtime, and I just think as a body, we need to, we need to look at that problem that currently exists. So just a comment, and hopefully the administration maybe brings us, as part of their budget package, something that we can look at and review. So that's my comment.
Yes.
County Executive reminded us today at East West Gateway that St. Charles, or St. Peters Mayor Lynn Pagano was elected as the president of the Missouri Municipal League for the coming year. So congratulations to Mayor Pagano for being elected by his peers to head up the municipal league. Hope he has a great year. Missouri hopes he has a great year.
Okay. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Is this your panel?